In honor of Transit Equity Day, House of Ramirez joined Atlanta City Council members Marcy Collier Overstreet, Antonio Lewis, and Andrea L. Boone. They hosted a town hall meeting in response to Martha's plan to build a bus rapid transit line in southwest Atlanta. The community had something to say, and we listened. Please tune in.
We are here at the church, and he does these type of things for our community all the time. And this is never about politics, it's about community. He hosts NPE meetings here, and pretty much anything that we ask him to do, he always says yes, and I thank him for that. Because that's what this type of community is about. That's what we need. We all need to work together, and that is what he does. So today, I am here gathered with all of the leadership that matters. And that should tell everyone something about why we're here. We're here because Hamilton Road deserves the promised investment of $317 million. It's really that simple.
Reverend, thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you. My name is Doug Shipman. I am the relatively new Atlanta City Council President. And I just want to say that last Friday, some of you know it was Transit Equity Day. Councilmember Dozier, who is here, had sponsored a resolution, and many of us were taking transit around the city. It's also Rosa Parks Birthday last Friday. Those two things have been linked together since President Ford. We can't let Transit Equity Day be one day. We have to make Transit Equity Day every day. And the future of this city depends on the investments that we make in our transit. So I want to hear, and all of us want to hear from you tonight, on what is needed, what is going to grow this community, what is going to drive it forward. Reverend, like you said, what happens on Hamilton is very important to the future of the entire city. So thank you very much for being here tonight and caring enough to make sure that we get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shipman. And now we're here from our honorable mayor, Mayor Dibbins.
Let's give it a five, man. Come on. Let's stand up. You don't have to be here tonight. Thank you. It has to be equitable. So that means that if we're gonna spend X number of dollars, a certain equitable position, a percentage of it, has to be spent around the city. Because I knew that I didn't want, at the end of the day, for all the tax dollars collected, to then just go to one project, or two projects, and those projects are not geographically spread around. So I passed a policy to make sure that when this day came, we were prepared for this day to be able to say, uh-uh. No matter what you think, no matter what anybody thinks, equity has to be already in the plan. So that's why I'm not nervous about what's gonna happen. We're gonna get a full $300 million of investment in transit on this Hamilton Road corridor. I'm not nervous about that at all. I'm not nervous about it for about three good reasons. One is because I put it in policy, so it's in writing. It was voted on unanimously by the city council, but she's got it in her hand right here. She's got that. So it's unanimous that $300 million or so is gonna be spent, right, on this corridor. So I got it in policy. Two, all of us are committed to that, because this is just a fraction of everybody that's concerned about this and gonna really rally to make sure that it happens. So we're not gonna stand idly by and let anything get missing. So it's two. And then three, I just don't happen to get voted the mayor. I got a whole lot to say about it. Those two things kind of solidify in my mind that we're gonna get our fair share. That means that to make sure it happens, you know, like they say, you know, what's the saying about, you know, trust in the Lord, watch the purse, right? Right? You still come to church, but put your purse real close to you, don't just leave it out there. You know, trust in the Lord, lock your car door. So I got my three reasons why I believe strongly that we put it in writing, that y'all know how to fight, and I'm the mayor. Those three good enough for me, but we still gotta carry out the process to the end zone, as he would, right? So the other part about this is there's still an obligation amongst us to be clear about what we actually want. And this is gonna be the first of the conversations that we have to have with ourselves as a community. We spend a lot of time telling people what we don't want and what we don't want to have happen to us. But I want us to be very clear about what we want, so we can have marching orders in the right direction. For me, if we get BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, which I'm hoping everybody's aware of what that means, that we probably might have to spend some time sharing the difference between BRT and LRT. If we get BRT down here, then the BRT is a lot less and it can come a lot faster. You can get this Bus Rapid Transit built out, central lane, so it's not on the edges. It's gonna be nice. It's just like a light rail in terms of how you would get on it, ingress, egress, onto the bus. Wifi and all that stuff will be a part of it. We saw it in LA, we're sending it to some other places. So it would be centerline, it'd be nice. But that still leaves about $200 million, and we gotta know what we want to do with it. $200 million for street skating, you know, beautiful sidewalks and street furniture and lights and cameras and light synchronization and even money for transit-oriented development, which is what we would call, you know, mixed-income housing or some sort of development around the transit stops. We have to then begin to say, well, what will we do with the rest of this money? Because we're gonna spend time tonight, and I know everybody's gonna spend a lot of time tonight saying what they don't want. And that's fine, that's good. That's still gonna leave us with room to discuss what we do want. I'm talking about us now. I know us. I know us. We'll talk about what we don't want, but we gotta talk about what we do want, right? Am I making sense? We do have to talk about what we do want. If you go with BRT, then you have other money left to be able to do other things that we did have to push to make sure that it's okay by the federal transit authority, that it's okay by the Department of Transportation and the federal government. Marla is governed by those people, but this is our money. This is city sales taxes that you spend and I spend on various things. So we have to direct them on what we want to do with our money. The other thing about BRT is, if we go BRT down here on Hamilton Road, then what they're gonna do on the Clifton Corridor, if it goes MRT, I see a 20 years from now, conversation about, they got a train on the north and we got a bus on the south. I see that happen. I see that happen. I see the race in that. I see the color in that. I see the class in that. I see the fight in that. And I'll be 67 years old, 20 years from now, and I'm gonna be sitting with somebody, they're gonna say, how you let a train go one way and a bus go the other way? Y'all see that too? I'm talking about us. I'm talking about us. I'm talking about us. So if we get this, we know the decision we made, we made it together, and we made it for these reasons. We're gonna get a bus rapid transit quickly. It'll go up fast, it'll be like this, it'll be like that. And you got some sidewalks, you got lights, you got cameras, you got, you know, transit-oriented development. You got $300 million, because I'm sure those three things I told you about earlier. I put it in policy, y'all are bad, and I'm the mayor. But 20 years from now, if they got a train up there and we got a bus down here, we don't have a fight. I'm just talking about what I'm talking about. So if the other answer to that is, spend $317 million on light rail, then you get the light rail transit. It's gonna take a little longer, and you won't have the money left for transit-oriented development. And so another thing, maybe between now and then we find one, because it's gonna take a lot longer. But that's the end of the, I mean, that is what it is. You get the light rail, you got a train, and they'll have a train up there to be equitable and equal. It'll still be $300 billion. We have a train. And then maybe somewhere along the way, we find more money for these transit-oriented development opportunities, for the lights, for the cameras, for the big sidewalks and the street furniture and all that other stuff. So that's where I stand. Is that kind of clear? And so then we have to talk about, what do we really want? Is it that we want a train, a light rail? Because I know we want something out here to get people to work to the Central Business District faster, because Hamilton Road is a very, is a highly-used Marla route, but it's the longest ride. It takes you 40 minutes or so to get from Greenborough to downtown by going to Oakland City Station and then getting on. It's a long ride, but if we get rapid transit of any kind, bus rapid transit, light rail. And by the way, I want to say this, you know, this ain't a campaign no more, because I'm in, and we're all in. But the first portion of this was all about the Belt Line. Mayor Bottens and me were both on the Transportation Committee way back when, and we both said, we need to make sure that we get transit down to, you know, down to Hamilton Road, down to Greenborough. I said, okay, this is our district. And I said, let's go. I was opposed to it, and Martha said, let's go, let's get it done. We legislated it in and said, also, this Belt Line rail, this Belt Line Rapid Transit also must go down to southwest Atlanta. So this policy makes sense. So that was the first policy, that any move had to include the southwest corridor. Then the next policy was that it had to be equitable when we start spending money. So I'm pretty clear about how policy manifests itself, you know, a few years later and what I think, you know, we can see the benefit of. But now, it's still us to kind of make decisions on what we want. We got the groundwork for it, but now we gotta make a decision. LRT versus BRT. BRT comes with its, you know, gets done faster, but it also leaves you with some people not feeling that it's the same mode, that it's exactly the same, that it feels the same. And that's it. That's what I think. And then I'm gonna pass it back to Marcy. I'm gonna stay here. I'm gonna answer questions. I want to hear from you. I've been at it all day, but I'm gonna go at it all night, because this is important. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna take that all in, because we do, we have a lot of decisions to make. Next, we'd like to hear from our past Senator Vincent Fort, who, by the way, lives right here off of Hamilton Road and has a lot to say.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm like Doug Shipman. I just got here. You can't be mad at me. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. First of all, let me thank the pastor for opening up the doors of the church to God's children. And I want to introduce a friend of mine, a close friend, who's been on the battlefield for a long time. Brick Dunham is the president of the Amalgamated Transit Union, Local 732. Stand up, Brick. Brick understands that labor cannot be successful unless it does what? Works with the community. So we appreciate that man right there. Let me just say this. You know, what I want to do, first of all, is tell you what this evening is not about. Because all on social media, there have been urbanists on social media talking about, well, do something about Hamilton Road sidewalks. Now, that's crazy. Why? Because when I fought like a dog to get sidewalks from Dodson to Ben Hill, wasn't nobody there to help me, except Sheriff Williams. Get Sheriff Williams around the place. Break the boundaries. And we thank Councilmember Overstreet for working with us to get a mile of sidewalks so children don't have to walk on the road going from the apartments to the library. So we appreciate that. This is not about sidewalks at the end of the day. And this is not about politics, although there are a lot of politicians in the room. I've seen more politicians per square foot than I've ever seen in my life in this church, to be honest. And you know what? That's good, because they're not sitting, but we want them to do what? Come back. We want to let this not be a one-off. Come down here to Hamilton Road, a forgotten street in southwest Atlanta. But let me tell you this. You heard what I said, Pastor? It's the truth. Now, what this is about tonight is promises kept. Promises made and promises what? Kept. And it's a very serious issue. It has implications for a long time. Because this part of town has been forgotten for a long time. And the politicians and the community have a lot to win or what? Lose. Because will we ever believe the politicians again if we don't get fairness and equity? I'm asking, will we ever be able to believe them again? No. I'm gonna tell you some history that you need to know. You know how we got that bankhead station? It wasn't because politicians wanted it, but the community wanted it. We beat the referendum for Marla the first time, because it was not what? Fair and equitable. The second time around, we said we got to get more. What did we get? The bankhead station. And when they were building it, Brick, you know this, they tried to break that promise. They said, y'all don't need no station now, 20 years later. But guess what? We said no. Promises what? Kept. And guess what? Now, Microsoft loves that station. They say it's part of the reason they're moving to Atlanta, because they'll have what? A Marla rail station nearby. Promises kept. And I'm not gonna go into all the details, but I want you to stay tuned tomorrow. Go on my Facebook page, because I'm gonna tell the whole story about white way leader and who's making money and who isn't making money on this deal. I'm gonna tell some of the truth tonight, but I'm gonna tell all the truth tomorrow. For Atlanta. Make sure you get on it about 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. But the bottom line is this. Emory is getting a train. The Belt Line is getting the train. And some folk on social media said, you take the BRT. And then I told them, I said, hold it now. Why don't we put a BRT on the Belt Line? Why don't we put a BRT out to Emory? As opposed to taking it from a black community, working-class black community? Let's be clear. If the truth matters, we have to say it. Emory is a large white institution. No, I ain't gonna be careful. I'm gonna tell the truth and shame the devil. Hello? Emory is a large white institution. And the Belt Line don't go nowhere near Hamilton Road. I've walked Hamilton Road. I've walked the sidewalks I've voted for. I fought for. I lived. I stayed two blocks around the corner. I love this neighborhood. And for people to come along, get us to vote for something, and then pull it back, bait and switch, that's a shame of a guy. And the bottom line is this. Mr. Mayor, you got a vote next year, don't you, and march on a peace blaus or something? Let me tell you this. If they lie to us on this, if they don't keep their promises on this, somebody gonna have to start a campaign to beat that penny tax in March. This is what I'm saying. You can applaud, that's all right. Why should we believe them and march when we can't believe them now? Take this money out of your pocket, because you thought it was gonna be light rail. I've driven, I've ridden light rail, and I've ridden BRT. Fact of the matter is, light rail is what? Faster. It's faster. I picked the bus from Oakland City down to Greenborough. I picked the bus from Oakland City down to my street and walked up two blocks. Stayed two blocks off of Hamilton Road. If you want to start with an investment, start with light rail. If you think you're gonna get $200 million out of Marla to do economic development on Hamilton Road, I got a bridge in Brooklyn I want to sell. Hello, somebody? If you think you're gonna get condos on Hamilton, I got something to tell you. So if we want to do investment, let's start with the LRT. Let's start with the light rail. I want to be able to walk down this two block, get on the rail. And then how is the bus rapid transit gonna connect with the Belt Line? I want everybody to have light rail, because there's a scam going on. People are getting rich on this behind the backs. And I'm not being paranoid. I can back up every word I say. If I have time later, more time later, I'll get up on this microphone and tell. But like I said, 3 o'clock on Facebook, we gonna have a good time. So I didn't say no to BRT, and I say yes to what? LRT. I say no BRT, you say no, we want what? LRT. I say no BRT, you say?
LRT.
I say no BRT, you say?
LRT.
One more time, I want them to hear you downtown. No BRT, we want?
LRT.
And the last thing I'm gonna say, Pastor, because I'm gonna be obedient. I'm gonna be obedient tonight. And this is something y'all need to know. I have never seen Marla act like this. I have never seen them walk through the back. I'm too nervous like this. I've never seen it. It's out of character for them to be so vicious, to issue statements attacking the council member. Shame on them. But see, when you mess with people's money, hello, somebody, they'll run over their grandma. They'll run over Marcy Overstreet, Andrea Boone, Antonio Lewis, you knew here, so they definitely gonna run over you. Get out the way. So we have got to surround these folk who are fighting for us. We got to surround them and make sure no harm, political allies, comes to them. Because you got to be ready to fight. Are you ready to fight? No, come on, Anthony. Are you ready to fight? I still didn't say anything. Are you ready to fight?
Thank you, Senator Fort. Okay, so next, we're gonna have our freshman council member, Antonio Lewis. He doesn't act like a freshman.
I really do feel like a freshman, even though I gotta let it up a little bit, right? I'm the tallest freshman, but I might be the only one using notes tonight, too. My folks want to make sure that we don't miss any points. It's a very, very, very important thing we got going on. I ran my campaign on social mobility. I know that once Cleveland Avenue, Hamilton Road, and Cass Cane get with everybody and what they got, the city gonna work a little bit better. I first want to say, my name is Antonio, and I represent the part of Atlanta that the ones in power in Atlanta never wanted to see get power, because I just might give it to the people. My name is Antonio, and I represent the part of Atlanta that the ones empowering Atlanta never wanted to see get power, because I just may empower the people. So I'm about to give y'all some information today. What the hell going on downtown? Here it goes, y'all. They moving money. Money that was promised to us, they're moving it to a different part of the city because they can. Only thing that's stopping them is, hello, my name is Antonio. I represent the part of the city of Atlanta that the ones in power in Atlanta never wanted to see get power, because they forgot they dealing with the most literate black society in the history of the planet. We're the most literate, because we can all read, and you can't have it in a book no more. We see it. We see it. So I'm gonna give y'all the details of what Marla's working on and what was promised, right? I want to stick to the facts. This is what they tell me to make sure I read in my notes. What is it? Senate Bill 369 authorized the city of Atlanta to do a half-cent tax for Marla. So we taxed our folks, we gave Marla something. We gave, this is a gift. I want y'all to know, we gave them something, right? This is what we asked them to do. All this came from their website when they explained what we gave them. Because we don't keep saying we gave them something, and it never would have happened without our state mayor. I'm so honored to call him Mayor, not our mayor. But I got the folks from the South Side saying, we want some equity, we want some social mobility, because I was DMing him. I was DMing him. I was smart. I was DMing our mayor, telling him, we want some social mobility, quick, forget about us. That's what I was telling him. So they signed this contract, this guy signed it in 2016. They started collecting it in 2017, so it's about five years ago. Y'all wanna know when this expires? 2057. We giving them money for 50 years, man. You gotta know, they get this for 50 years. This ain't just a five-year thing. 2057. Want me to tell you how much money they thought they would get on that deal, the whole 50 years? They thought they would get between 2.5 billion and 3.5 billion. I heard they got more than $2 billion already. But I'm the council person, why am I talking about what I heard? Why, I don't know? How do I give you the information if I don't know? We even asking them what's going on, so I'm trying to see why I don't know. So I then researched it. I gotta go to Georgia State University Fiscal Research Team and the Georgia Department of Revenue to get an explanation of what projects, whenever they change it. I want to make sure Marla went through that process, whenever they changed the process from what they originally said. Marla then provided projects to the city of Atlanta. Before we gave them this money, we asked them what they gonna do with it. We asked them, why you want to, black and white? This is black and white. So when they called me a liar today, my grandma ain't writing a lie. When they called Councilmember Overstreet a liar today, I don't think she was lying when she told me what was going on. And black and white, we asked them, because I know Councilmember, Mayor Dibbins told me, I want to see what you gonna do with this money. That's why I just put that together. He said, what you gonna do with the money? So we gave them a few months to come up with what they want to do with the money. But we gave all deadlines. I want to talk through deadlines, right? So May 31st, 2016, we vetted something that they gave us May 16th. So we vetted it for about 15 days, right? We asked them for their final list by June 20th of everything they said they gonna do, everything. We didn't want to leave anything off a chance, right? And then by July 31st, they gave us the list. Do y'all know the number one project was on that list, the first project? Hamilton Road, LRT, 5 miles. $317 million. That's what it said. That's what it said. So what we talking about, what we said, right? Let me keep going through, because they want me to read from the notes. I'm from Cleveland Avenue, so I believe in your face card. I like going to the barber shop. My face card gotta be clean to go into the barber shop. I ain't a drug going there, right? I believe that we made a deal in good faith with Marla. I think they either forgot what they said, or they outright lied to us. And they called me a liar. Imagine that, kind of Trump stuff it is. My campaign was ran on social mobility and good policy to fix social mobility, to fix the issues that we have. I ran on social mobility, because I understand that we live in a city where policy can actually fix it. I seen them do it to my wife. I'm standing in front of y'all as a kid with no mother. My mom was murdered when I was three. Shot over 20 times in this city. So we had dealt with this violence before in this city. I understood what policy did. Policy is the reason I'm here. We got the same mentor, because she made sure I got what I want. So when we say we gave Marla, we gave Marla money, because they told us they was gonna do some policy. We believed them. We believed you. Why you playing with us? An elected official must hold bureaucrats accountable. This is a public-private partnership. That's what this is. I'm an elected official. I gotta hold them accountable. We also, we need Marla to show good faith and be a good-faith actor in this partnership. We need Marla to remember this is a partnership in that we've given them exclusive rights to build in this city. We giving them all the latitude. When we say Marla's never act like this, I worked for Marla. I used to work for Marla when the police car came through. I was one of the people. I worked for Marla. Marla ain't never treated Atlanta like this, or maybe I don't remember. So we need you to remember that we can create new partnerships. So I'm new to the council, but not new to living. I don't do business with people I can't trust. Right now, Marla, we need you to fix this relationship. Once again, I want to say thank you. My name is Antonio Lewis, Councilman from Cleveland Avenue. Once Cleveland Avenue, Hamilton Road, and Cass Cane look like bucket, Atlanta gonna work. Watch.
Thank you councilmember Lewis. And now, we have another councilmember, she's at large, and she is Keisha White.
Alright.
I have also a freshman on the Atlanta City Council.
Alright.
I want you to recognize my colleague, councilmember Michael Julian Vaughn, I think you're in the room somewhere. Thank you for coming, sir. Thank you to our host Reverend Fleming this evening, Mr. Mayor. So I'm here to join my colleagues to express my support surrounding the conversation on that copy. And I think my other colleague has so eloquently already articulated that, but for the most part, I, I love the idea of addressing the issue of the penny sales tax. I think that the best way to get our colleagues and friends' attention is through money. And ultimately, that's what this conversation is here about this evening, is money. Uh, I believe that economic development is driven by transportation. And I think each of you in the room understand that, which is why you're here tonight. And so I just simply were here to voice my support for councilmember Overstreet, uh, Lewis and Boone, uh, as the head arch member, and again, I thank you for your support, uh, representing Post 3. Uh, I'm very eager to hear from each of you tonight, oftentimes, I sit in rooms where we very rarely get to hear uh, from those who supported us and voted us in. So again, I thank you each for being here and I thank you for the opportunity to serve, thank you. Thank you councilmember White. This next councilmember needs absolutely no introduction at all, this is councilmember Boone. I'll be back after her to say a few words and then we can move on to you.
Thank you councilmember Overstreet, thank you so much. I will be brief because we are here to hear from you. We are here to hear from you. So I wanna thank my courageous colleagues. Stand up. This, they need courage, they have courage. Thank you to the great Reverend Timothy Fleming. And to the greatest Andre Dickens from Adamsville, Atlanta, Georgia. He could have been anywhere, he could have been anywhere. And guess what? He's here. He's here. To rock pit, stand up, you've been on the line a long time. Fighting with my father, the late Reverend Josephine Boone. We can never forgive you or his chief of staff, the beautiful Harriet Thomas for answering the calls. Harriet, stand up, you always behind the scenes. Harriet, you answer the calls. So thank you so much to our other colleagues. The Honorable Doug Shipman. The Honorable Michael Julian Vaughn. The Honorable Jason Dozier from District 4. My Uncle Charles Steele. Everybody's here, Georgia, stand up. Stand up, Devon, thank you for being here. Did we miss anybody? Senator Horace Tina Tate, whose father was the first black man to run for mayor of Atlanta. Stand up, Horace Tina. And her mother, Virginia Tate. Stand up.
Attorney Greaves.
Oh, Attorney Greaves? Gerald Greaves. And, 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 and I, I just wanna recognize these people because without them, there will be no us.
Okay.
See, without them, Aaron Toffo will talk me out of running campaigns. With C T Y, we haven't lost one yet. Family Comma Ladder, and I could just go on, but without you all, there will be no us. Senator Thor, Derek Bolson on the phone late at night. Marcy been burning his phones up. Marcy, call you Overstreet. Has been burning phones up. But I just wanna say thank you Reverend Fleming. Thank you for everything, you've been on this court a long time. Fighting. Fighting. Thank you Mount Palmer. Because without Mount Palmer, there would be no us. So we wanna hear from you now. We're here to hear from you. Again, we can be reached at 404-330-6055 and 404-330-6054. Antonio, what's yours? 330? Keisha, what's yours? 6053? Call us and we'll be here, but now we wanna hear from the people of Atlanta, Georgia.
And before we start, I did wanna leave you all with a few facts. And you'll find these facts also in the packets that we made for you all. I want you to pay very close attention to a page that looks like this. Because this is what we've been speaking of. See, what we're talking about, you guys? It's not hearsay. We're talking about facts. You know when they say believe? None of what you hear and half of what you see? It's a real thing. Because there's a video out with me talking about how much I love BRT, and guess what? We were in LA, I loved BRT. I thought it was absolutely beautiful. But what I didn't say? Not once was that I did not want the full 317 million dollars of investment on Hamilton Road. They promised 317 million dollars. I saw a presentation for 120 million dollars. That to me is a missing 200 million dollars. Now I don't know who said stealing, but I didn't. I, I didn't, but what I did do, again, is I put it in writing. I, I legislated it. I said, councilmembers, please join me, because what we need now is accountability. We need an audit. We need to know what the hell is going on. We need to know where is the 200 million to go with this 120 million that we talked about for four full years? Now I, I don't claim to know everything. But I know a lot. And I definitely don't get money confused. 200 million dollars was not on that presentation. So I asked my councilmembers to join me to figure out what is where. And please join me in making sure that Marta is going to deliver on that promise. And not only has my council, have my councilmembers joined me, but all of the regional elected officials have too, and so have you. And I wanna thank y'all for that. And I'm telling you, I'm not backing down. I don't care what other names they can come up for me. Because I know me well. I'm not a liar, I'm an honest broker, I have a great memory. And I definitely am a south side girl. The South's got something to say. The money stays on Hamilton Road. It's that simple. Now we're ready to accept questions, and we'll start here and then we'll go back and forth.
Well, first of all, I would like to extend my profound gratitude to the, to the head of this house, Reverend Fleming. Thank you so much for opening up the doors to the people. Also to Mayor Dickens, thank you so much for your time, your presence, and your energy, your commitment in answering the call. And also to the host of councilmembers here, thank you all so much for your service and going beyond the call of duty to give our people what we know we deserve. My name is Jeremy Crane, I'm the youngest of Benny Crane Senior, who is the pioneering, pioneering additionaire behind the beautiful city of South Fulton. I was born and raised right here in the south side, shouting, you know, on time, right? And I just, don't let this move taste fool you. It is after six o'clock, so I feel like I can get a little loose with my language, however. I am a, I'm, I'm keeping clean. I'm a lifetime educated and my interest is in how in the way, how in the world can we allocate some of this 317 million dollars in our curriculum for our kids to be able to benefit from these funds? Because we can inspire the next generation of entrepreneurs in their steam, in their steam curriculum that can learn the technology. Is there a way that we can carve out some space for our kids to be able to benefit from this money in the schools to learn and to be able to contribute to this movement for the next 50 years? Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, I, to be honest with you, I don't know. We need to check in on that. But I wanna ask something about Chopin. How many of y'all would prefer an LRT? Raise your hand. How many want an LRT? Okay, those people want an LRT, stand up. Stand up. Stand up.
Tell someone what it is, man.
Alright, light rail, they know what it is. Okay, alright, take some pictures of this. This is, this is real. This is real. You politicians, sit down, okay? Okay? Sit down, sit down. That will run you out. How many want a BRT? Raise your hand. Stand up if you want the BRT, if you want a bus. No, ain't served, ain't nobody in here wanting it. Learn something about democracy. The majority of what? Rules.
This is really a shame that we're here because we really should be here talking about what the train is gonna look like and where the socks are. Uh, Reverend Fleming, we were in the community room, um, years ago talking about the interchange that you've been trying to have fixed almost 10 years ago, and you still haven't gotten that, I, I know. Um, when the survey went out in 2016, Georgia Stand Up got involved because only 60 people had answered the survey. And so we started going door to door, we started going to the Marta stations and asking people what they wanted. And what they said they wanted was light rail. So we helped to get this passed. And what you said you wanted was light rail. That was what you said you wanted. So I see we're in this wonderful church and right above us says, I can do all things through Christ which strengthens me. All things.
All things.
And so there's two kinds of power. There's organized people and there's organized money. And I submit, in this room, you have both. So if you want light rail, demand light rail. Make them give you what you want. Make them give you what you earned. Make them give you what you voted for. This is not just America, this is southwest Atlanta. You are in the middle of the epicenter of the universe right now. Georgia is in the middle, Atlanta is in the middle, in the middle of that is southwest Atlanta. You control the politics here. Fix it. Somebody messed up along the way. Fix it. That's the message today. Fix it. We want light rail. Fix it. We want light rail. Fix it. Fix it. We want light rail. Fix it. So we're gonna give them time to fix it, Mr. Mayor, right? Because they gonna fix it. So if they say it's gonna take 10 years to make it happen, just settle for this. We've been waiting all this long, give us what we want. Give us what we voted for. Remember, there is another election just around the corner and another one right after that. The people of Atlanta elected presidents, elected senators, and we will take you in, put you in, and take you out. The people of Atlanta have said, they want what? Light rail. Light rail. Light rail. Be clear, don't get confused. BRT is right some places. But on Hamilton Road, you said you wanted a train. You didn't say you wanted a bus, you wanted a train. So demand that, stick with it, negotiate. Negotiate, you're a great negotiator because you build circles. So I know you gonna bring some circles around in here. So we're circling around this whole southwest quarter and we want the sidewalks, we don't want the gas station, we don't want the liquor store, and we want the train. Thank you so much.
First of all, I wanna say, um, give an honor to God who is the head of my body, the pastor of this church, who is my pastor, Reverend Timothy Fleming. I remember when I came home after serving 13 years in prison. Half the house told me, said, listen, you got two weeks to find a job. If you don't find a job in two weeks, you going back to prison. Because of Reverend Fleming and this church and this community, him, Reverend Fleming called the half of the house and said, send him over here. I'll give him a job. And when I think about what's going on right now, I wanna say to the mayor, man, I love you, man. The things that, that you bring to this city and a lot of the young people who I help, they respect you and they're looking forward to change in this city. I just simply wanna say, there's got to be some, somebody that we gotta point fingers at. We can't, we, it's like we talking, we don't know who we talking about. You know, and I, I'm honestly being honest, it's like, it's like I, I remember when I was in the streets, if I got robbed, I know who robbed me most of the time. So we need to know who robbed us. It reminds me, it, 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 it's freaking me out because it's, we in Black History Month. And it reminds me when we go back into the history, not only of this city, but of this country. It also reminds me of the speech that Dr. Martin Luther King said in 1964. He said at that time that America had written the black folks a bad check. And that check had come back marked insufficient funds. Now I don't know about y'all, but I'm a fighter. But we gonna cash in that check because it came back and it bounced. So we wanna cash in that check on behalf of the people of southwest Atlanta. And I, I owe you. I don't care if it's worth a penny, that's my penny.
I thought that's right.
That's my penny.
Of every dollar.
Of every dollar. And I want my money to go to this community who helped me when I came back home and nobody was helping me.
While we have a second, I just wanna thank Commissioner Natalie Hall for coming also. Wanna make sure everyone knows who's, who's here for this conference.
My name is Larry Riley. I was born here in Atlanta. Eighties baby, crawled along hospital. My mom, my parents should tell me about, my parents should tell me about, um, the stories, but you know, back in the day how Hamilton Road used to be popping, they used to have high lines, clubs, shopping, everything, you know? But, uh, my question is this, whether we get, I'm, I'm all for an LRT. Either we get BRT or LRT. We know we got this high poverty, high African-American unemployment and underemployment. Is there a training program or pipeline, no matter which one we get, are we gonna have our young African-Americans working on that building that? Because I don't wanna see, riding on the street, seeing a bunch of non-African-Americans working on these rails and these buses and everything. Is there anything, make sure African-Americans are the majority of the workers that get up on there and working on this stuff?
Hi, my name is Sherri Williams. Thank you, and I wanna, uh, thank everybody who's here today, but I wanna thank Reverend Fleming for again, opening up your church in a SWAT, we appreciate it. I wanna thank our Mayor Dickens by having the courage to stand on the US Capitol steps shortly after being elected. Talking about the great things happening in southwest Atlanta. And one of them is light rail, which is the key. I wanna thank Deborah Scott, who hired me in 2017. And the project was to make sure that the Marta project on Hamilton Road got funded. For. And we got it funded for. But guess what? You can't go to sleep. Jesus told him, can't you stay awake? He left and came back ever sleeping. We are not asleep. We are woke. So I wanna make it perfectly clear, that BRT trip that Councilwoman Overstreet went on, that Councilwoman Dickens went on, that Michael Julian, Councilwoman Michael Julian Vaughn was on. Oh yeah, I was there too. There you go. It was, it was a good trip. So we know the difference between light rail, LRT, and bus rapid transit, BRT. So let me ask you a question. Would you take your life savings and be, put your business across the street from a rail station? Or you gonna put it across the street from the bus stop? We know that periodically, bus stops do what? Move. So, one of the things about BRT is that it's flexible. They can move it. But guess what, now, they keep doing what? Moving everything. So when someone buys a house, gets a job near the bus stop, then they move the bus stop. I mean, but what do we, what do we, only three people riding the bus over there, well, maybe those three people are the ones that need that to get to work. So we need to figure that out. I want to tell everybody on the planet that the number eighty-three, Campbellton Road bus, has the second highest ridership in the entire martyr system. Not just in Atlanta martyr buses, not, it's across all three counties. Clayton, Fulton, and Cab, and the city of Atlanta. Pre-COVID, almost five thousand people, including myself, rode that bus. So if we have the second highest ridership, oh, and did I tell you that seventy to eighty percent of the people that ride the number eighty-three don't have access to a car?
And it's five thousand per day.
And that's five thousand a week. Five thousand a week. So, we have earned...
Say what?
We have earned the right to ask for and receive with our tax dollars, light rail transit.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I want to say one last thing, one last thing. They says it takes seven to ten years to build light rail. Remember when the I- eighty-five bridge, it was supposed to take how many months? They did it in record time, because it was a priority for who? The Northside. So they brought people in from all over the country to help put that bridge back together. So when you have a priority, you bring everybody. But then when we have a priority, you gonna try to bait switch. We are woke, we are ready, we are standing on the shoulders of Angela, Martin, Maynard. Rosa. Fanny Lou.
Shut up.
I want you to know that we are woke and we are not going anywhere. If you want to start World War III on Campbellton Road, bring it on.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm Jay Lawrence Miller, I'm president of Dare Park, um, in southwest Atlanta, I'm a Beltline neighborhood. I want to bring that up because sometimes they try to make the argument as Campbellton Road shouldn't have LRT, because it might take away from the Beltline neighborhoods. I'm a Beltline neighborhood, and it won't take anything away from us. Be very clear about that, it takes nothing away from the Beltline neighborhoods. Mr. Mayor, you said you wanted to hear what, uh, the people want? Perhaps it's time to reevaluate the intergovernmental agreement between martyr and the city. Perhaps it's time to readdress who's on the martyr board, who don't support the people here in southwest Atlanta. It's time to really look at exactly what's going on and making sure that everybody here knows what I'm talking about. Because it's an important part of this governmental piece where you'll get blamed, and our city council members get blamed for something that martyr's doing. That means it's time to start looking at that agreement again. It has nothing to do with Beltline rail. It has to do with light rail here. Because when it comes here, you'll see an economic development I've never seen before. Are you worried about people being dismayed that may happen, but you know what the Beltline is? If you are older and you are a legacy resident, there's a tax abatement program, a tax assistance program for you. The city can do the same thing. Martyr can do the same thing. So that the development that comes along with rail far outreaches any type of development that'll come along with, with us. So I want you to know, the Beltline neighborhoods stand with Campbellton Road. This is important. This is very important. Let's make it happen.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Moda Mohammed, I'm twenty-six years old, and I am a small business owner inside of Green Borough Mall. And for twenty-six, my biggest goal is my community, and if it wasn't for my community, I wouldn't be who I am today. And a few things would be, of course, beautifying, educating, empowering, providing resources and opportunities. And I feel like this train would bring a lot of resources and opportunities to the community, as well as adding value to the community. And Route eighty-three, I did some little research that I did before I came, it has four thousand people daily or weekly, from what I've heard. And transportation justice is to equal access of all people to the transportation they need for a better quality of life. And all of these people that are using the bus system is to get them to work, to give them the job opportunities that we really don't have within the community. I grew up here in this community, and I've heard so many stories about the old Campbellton that I don't know it, but I know this Campbellton essentially. Because it's a dead Campbellton Road, Green Borough Mall, since I've been in the mall for three years, I've heard so many stories that I never believed. So many things such as a movie theater downstairs, restaurants, and there's so much history that I would, so much history that I would not have known if... I know that. So much history that I would not have known if I wasn't a tenant inside of the mall, and it's the senior citizens coming in there thanking me for bringing something of quality to the community. And I feel like this train would bring quality to those that are using it. Because we do not have the luxury of a lot of things within our community, we spent a lot of our money yonder. And I don't know why, when this area is what essentially built Atlanta, I, growing up, my dad would tell me, "Oh, the mayor lives there, the mayor does this." And seeing the mayors now, they all grew up in the community. I feel like I become, I can become anything because of where I was raised, of what I've seen, the people that are around me, I feel like I could do anything, and that's because of this community. Essentially, I would love for the community to keep growing in value while it's still in our hands, but we're gentrified. My mother was economics in college, and I see that economically, this is the area that is next to grow, and I'd rather grow in our hands. I'd rather us continue to gain value. We spend the most dollars, and I don't know if this was true, on the internet, it said that we spend the most dollars, but we don't have net value, our community will give us values.
Thank you.
John Lewis, Lisa Boyd, when she was a councilwoman, when Sherida Franklin and, uh, John Lewis, and even Jesse Hill, and David Scott met in my office. Are you aware that this is the last piece of green space in southwest Atlanta? The last cascade of all is mashed up. This is the last piece of green space in southwest Atlanta. Don't forget that.
Uh, my name is Scotty Smart, I'm an activist and organizer, and I'm a son of Campbellton Road. I went to Continental College Elementary School, over to Bunch Middle School, I grew up at Adams Park every Saturday. And as we see Atlanta develop, I can drive down Campbellton Road, and it looks exactly the same as it did twenty years ago. Everywhere else in Atlanta, you see sky rises and opportunities, but they're taking that away from our community. And I, I work now as a community activist, a community development, and criminal justice reform. And a lot of times, I work over at Georgia Vocational Solutions, going to be in here, because I want to empower this community. So what we do is we take people who are convicted felons and give them better job opportunities by certifying them, employment licenses, things like that. But the most common question I get from them is, "Do y'all have a transportation for us to get there?" We have people who are trying to do better with themselves, but don't have an opportunity to take advantage of, because they don't have the opportunities presented to them. So I want to say thank you to all of the politicians in here for really standing up for this community and making sure that this community is heard, because we're so often overlooked that I made my life's work to develop Campbellton Road. And so, when I look at this, there's a couple of questions I have, because it was one of my first time hearing about it. But, um, first off, it says only nine hundred thirty-eight people in the neighborhood were, were surveyed?
I don't know.
That's, that's, that's definitely not enough. So yeah, that was, so that was the first thing, um, I saw, and the second question I had was about the routes. Um, I'm still, like I said, listening and trying to understand what's the best outcome for the community, which most do feel like is light rail. And I remember Andre saying that, um, that, excuse me, the mayor, sorry. Excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir. But, um, on the transit bus line, he, early, he said that it takes forty minutes to get from Green Borough to Oakland City. It doesn't say what it would do in the development stage, or how that would change the timeframe, and it does say that the six mile, six mile route would be sixteen minutes on the light rail. So if you have cut a third of the time and have to get to a certain position, then that automatically will allow you to get to work a lot faster. So I'm just still looking at the dynamics of what, how it wanes out, what we do to the community development in this ci, in this city, and right here on Campbellton Road, because it hasn't changed in these twenty years.
Hi, my name is Eda Lapo, and I live at twenty-two thirty-two Belvedere Avenue, where I have lived for the last forty years. I came here to Atlanta with my former husband to take over D.O.F. department. He is now deceased, and in, in his, and in his, um, paradise. I wanted to, uh, I contacted the, the, um, United States government last week, the U.S. Department of Transportation, to get a better understanding of the laws, the rules, and regulations that we are going to be governed by. There is also research that has been done by Harvard University, which I think every black person should look at, and it talks about moving towards equity. It gives you all the rules, the regulations, the laws, and how projects are supposed to be reviewed and approved by the federal government. This is an eye-opener. Because I remember many times in Atlanta, as president or chair of the NBU, uh, we worked hard to get money to southwest Atlanta. Oftentimes, it didn't come. The money that we had for the, um, T-School went somewhere else. The money that we had for the, uh, tax, uh, funds that was supposed to go to, that was taken from the businesses that was supposed to go for the improvement of Campbellton Road, it went to the Beltline. You can, historically, since nineteen seventy-five, you can see that we have been neglected. We have not gotten the opportunities that we should have gotten. And oftentimes, it doesn't have anything to do with martyr, it has something to do with all people. We have to change. We have to be better about managing our money and getting money into our community. I'm concerned because it's all about the, the devil in the details. We need to know what is going on with martyr, we need to know what's going on with Emory University, how are they getting money, how are they doing what they're doing? And I, is this another period of time when we are going to do that back?
Thank you.
And so I'm saying that I would like to see us work together, not just the politicians, because we have a rule with the city of Atlanta that says the citizens are supposed to be involved. We have not been involved, we don't even really know what's going on, and we need to be at the table.
Let me speak to one element, sixty seconds, one element of what you said. You asked about Emory. And I'm gonna give you a little preview of my Facebook post tomorrow, okay? How long has Emory been in the city? Three years, four years? If you look at the list, did you, oh, yes, they are. Three hundred and fifty million dollars for LRT at Emory. Let me tell you how the deal got done, sixty seconds. The Reed administration told Emory, "We will let you in the city." "If you help us to close down the Petri Pine Home Shelter." Tell the truth, shake the devil out. You said it was the thing to do. So, so the Reed administration and his C.O.O., Dan Gordon, work, who is a graduate of Emory, worked with Emory to get inside the city limits. They only been in this, how long Campbellton Road been in the city limits? Two hundred years? They've been in, they're getting three hundred and fifty million dollars. And hence, who owns Petri Pine right now?
Emory.
Emory, Martyr for six point two million dollars.
Penny's on a dollar.
Well, my grandmama used to say, "Something rotten in the top."
Take Martyr everywhere. I enjoy taking Martyr, which means I spend a lot of money. I want my property. It's insulting my integrity for them to say, "Oh, it's a black light, it don't matter, I got a light. I enjoy my life, I do a lot of things with my life. I have neighbors that do a lot of things with their life. Transportation matters also. I spent my money, giving my property, it's mine. It's theirs. It's not Emory's. Emory, not too long ago, had to give the Farouk Rabbis' body back to Egypt. Now they want us? I want my property. I want my property. I spent my money, giving my property. If I went to buy a car, giving my car.
My name is Zachary Sees, I'm the founder and CEO of Revolutionary Entertainment Group, um, originally from Monroe, Louisiana. So I appreciate you all for accepting me as family. Me and my partners are in the process, um, of purchasing the Green Borough Mall for redevelopment. We've already agreed to turn it into a DLOI and a purchase sale agreement. So this is a blessing, because this is all a learning thing, it's a learning curve. Um, I'm here for the community, I'm here to stand by you. I will do everything in my power to help push the rail line, because that's literally the first thing that comes up in every meeting I go to. Um, so, with that being said, thank you all, I love you all, and I'll be here to help and support as well.
Hello, I'm Zach Adrianson, NPUX Chair, for those of you who don't know, NPUX is where Campbellton turns to DIL. Uh, just a couple of comments, I know, um, we talked a little bit about if Emory was on that more martyr, I know one project that definitely wasn't, was the Summer Hill BRT, which was requested by private developers in Georgia State. And I would like to know how much of our more martyr money has gone to that project instead of this project? And then also, as a follow-up, um, there's been a number of just violations of process, uh, and to say a joke, Martyr seems to be off the rails. Uh, our Zoom link for that update meeting didn't work. Uh, I couldn't get the info out to our community, there's just a lot of shoddy details going on, I'd like some answers to, so.
Pause for a minute, if you want to recognize Mayor Bill Campbell, please stand there, please stand. Also, Commissioner Tadisa, please stand, Commissioner, please stand. Matts, please stand, Representative Matts, please stand. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I am the current vice chair of NPUR, a former chair of NPUR. I represent the NPUR Executive Committee. We are comprised of eleven sovereign neighborhoods, from Continental Colony to Adams Park. Uh, I am an APS kid. Uh, I'm a little bit older than Mayor Dickens and, uh, Councilmember Overstreet, but I went to Archer High, that's right, the Fighting Eagles. And we fight over here, our entire NPU Executive Committee, we want to implore, "Sir, Mayor, it's not, don't let this be an either-or situation. We can do LRT, and we can also do commercial development and revitalization of this community." We work with, um, some of our, uh, Mark and Tabby, who owns Campbellton Delo Plaza. We've worked to get him with Commissioner King to come up with a viable plan to have their whole, uh, property be more foot traffic friendly. We are trying very hard to be what it is your vision is, uh, what it is council members said, a lot of our council people said their vision is, for better transportation. Uh, but we also know, uh, and by the way, I grew up on the Northside, uh, Northwest Side. I grew up when Morris Mill Shopping Center was in rapid decline. There was one reason my parents and I moved south. Uh, there was a big star and a food giant over there. That area was desolate for years. Look at it now, there's a Publix, there used to be a Basket of Robins over there. I was happy to see this, one of the things that that district brought back. Why can't we have another Red Lobster on Campbellton Road? This cannot be an either-or situation. If they put, they owe us the light rail, we know martyr is not in the business of revitalizing communities and neighborhoods, but if it works everywhere else, I don't see why it can't work here. And we, 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 we cannot take part of the package, as Ms., uh, as Sherri Williams has said, we have earned this.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Children's Drive. Thank you, by the way, um, Rev. and Overstreet, um, for getting rid of that club on the corner, I hope that's permanent, by the way. So I appreciate your hard work, those neighborhoods, those that we talk about. And, um, also to Overstreet, thank you so much for your aides, David, Frank, every time I call, they always get back, so that's powerful to have, you know, your representatives, they're very powerful, they get back to you, they follow up. Congratulations again. Congratulations again to Andre, who I've been knowing and working with. I also, by the way, um represent two different organizations, I'm retired and turn around your service, so um um yeah, so retired old man. So, uh firstly, just to speak to a lot of people, um Sharon, you speak on the phone, she's one of my neighbors. And uh Larry earlier, he made a comment um about, you know, political education. We got the, this this neighborhood like says its story, so what we got to do, um my 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 comment is two parts. Is how do we get a powerful political education for that young brother that's doing the work, this young businesswoman here? So that they can sort of speak past the torch? Because it could be kind of overwhelming, you know, what's going on, how do we uh have those conversations that I have privilege to? You know, so how can we implement that? But getting back to once again, um Campbellton Road. Getting activity over here, like I sit on the board, um you got uh Mr. Johnson here, oh the Hoover did the Juneteenth Festival, huge. He's right in the room, he's on shows with my neighbor. Johnson, sit up real quick. So I sit on the board there. We have the Juneteenth Festival, we have the largest in the years in uh in the country. I also sit on the board of Palmsland Park. So we can get some festivals over here and we can get that transportation together. Who's been to Alphabet and saw Avalon? We, why can't we redevelop with Talon Hurry or Greenbrier, those areas that have a skyline, Cascade Towers? So let's dream big, let's do political education. Let's get Georgia Tech open back up so those young black kids can work on transportation and get some jobs.
First of all, I, it just dawned on me back in the nineteen hundreds when I was at Washington High School, because I was in the West End community, we would just hop on the bus. I mean, hop on the train, we called it bus. We would hop on train, hit Five Points, go to Lenox Station. Well, they have the Magic Johnson Theater over here that we never got to because there was no train to get here. Getting on the bus was like going, you know, a hundred million miles away. So, this young man over here said that he was gonna start some type of Atari thing. And my little son over here, the fifteen year old Lincoln, were perked up. Well, if his friends could hop on the train, come over here and get to his Atari station, then we build economy in ours, in our side of town. If we have a train system, all my coworkers out in Douglasville, instead of going to High Tower Station to get to the Falcons gang, they would come over here and catch the train here and that revenue would come back to us. So this train makes all the sense real, but it didn't dawn on me because I was raised in the West End. I moved here to get a house for my little young man. So now I knew about their high school, I knew about Continental Colony. But if we can have a rail line, we can do what we, I, what all y'all been talking about, build our community. So Mayor Dickens, please give us our rail line, please go in hot and up. I'm trusting you, considering support, trust you. I did owe for the other guy, I'm sorry, but I trust you. So just give us that Marta place, I'm over here, so you can get this movie theater back open and get the Atari stand that you was talking about, I sure appreciate it.
I've been here since nineteen ninety-one. I stayed in the same apartment for twenty years. My co was smoking, oh, congratulations. Mayor Dickens. Uh my co was coming, he said, "Well, somebody need to get a new car, I got a new car." He said, "I stayed in the same apartment for twenty years," he said, "Why would you keep on paying rent in an apartment where you can get a house, a guy, a new house, a guy, who wants to got a doctor?" Maybe five more years on it. But my, the question is, when, when first of all, the Bible says, "If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and praise and seek my face and turn..." From their wicked ways. Then will I hear from heaven and forgive their sin and heal their lands? So, the police department, please, they need some money. I make more money sitting at home than some other part, I mean, the police department's been working for ten years. So let's increase that salary, let's start at about seventy-five thousand dollars a year. In Jesus's name.
Amen.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mary Parker and I want to say to everyone here today that I am so very encouraged of what I'm hearing. I'm feeling a unity, a uniting of a community with with um elected officials, with our school people, as well as our business community. I have a story to share. When I moved to Campbellton Road, I didn't have to move there, but I love the people of the southwest Atlanta. So I moved down the street from Pastor Fleming's, I thought was one of my first stops to, when I came here, to learn what was going on and what the needs of the community were. I tried to close out my property located at twenty-eight hundred Campbellton Road Junction, twenty-eight hundred, which is the home of the Mary Parker Foundation, with a mission to stamp out underserved communities. That's what I'm hearing here, Pastor, when I came here in nineteen ninety-two, it was also a very thriving community, we can get that back. With the conversations we're having here this evening, that is our gateway. But here's the thing I want to share with you. When I said to my friends and colleagues that I'm moving my nonprofit to southwest Atlanta, they actually laughed at me. But thank God for people like, for people like Councilwoman Overstreet. We had difficulties closing the building, but one call, that was all. She answered the call. And we've worked very closely together in everything that we're doing. Thank you also Attorney uh Griggs, you've both so been very, very instrumental in the things we're doing. And Mayor Dickens, you know that we absolutely adore you and we're here to be your partner in accomplishing your missions in southwest Atlanta. And I'm very, very grateful because I heard the young lady just read a scripture from um a Ch- Chronicles seventeen fourteen, or may have that different. But there's also a scripture that I stand on, I challenge all of you, God have given wisdom and knowledge, that the scripture I'm referring to, it says that my people, my people, you are my people, I came to southwest Atlanta for my people. The word says, "My people perish from lack of knowledge." I believe that if we become very aggressively seeking to bring resources unlimited, such as technology, such as healthcare, education, all the other benefits that will help us thrive as we're building together a southwest Atlanta that shall live forever. Thank you so much.
Hi everybody, my name is Chris Brown and it just feels good to be in the church, for one reason, you know what I mean? To see people congregating together and coming out for a good old fight. You know, I'm fourth, four generations in being in southwest Atlanta. And I remember riding the eight or three to going down to Greenbrier, you know what I mean, M B K late nights, you know what I mean, trying to get back home, catch that last bus. Uh I got a gentleman that stay up and down Cascade and Campbellton Road, so I had to come up here and speak because I got one of King's wild dreams. And we all here for a good fight. But we don't want to fight too long because we've been fighting this pandemic for too long. And so therefore it's been already said that what needs to happen in terms of agreements that Mayor Dickens uh has such elaborated on. Uh and we feel confident, you know, so take the word back to Marta, we understand that in the church, because we don't tell lies in the church. So I respect for not coming to the church, but as you do that, all right, I would ask that you do an impact summary, because where I come from, uh if you take some money, if you get some money that 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 or misappropriated, you get a thing called garnishment, you know? And so we need to do an impact uh summary on future withholdings from Marta if they don't comply to what we need. Like if that requires us to go to session, we still in session right now. So let's go ahead and take that opportunity while doing that audit and do the things that's necessary and send the rights home. We understand that they move some commas and some zeros and some other things around, just go reconfigure that and get us what we need. And uh these good people go home and be happy.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody, really glad to see all of you here, I'm very glad that people are engaged. Thank you so much uh to our representatives as as well as the Reverend for, you know, hosting this, this is very important. I was furious over the weekend when I saw the news about this and I was very heartened to also see that there was this legislation coming around to account for the money that all of a sudden was unfeasible for this project, right? Um in terms of it not being feasible, I'm kind of at a loss though, because the city itself is the entity that restripes roads, right? So what is Marta bringing to the table in terms of B R T that it's going to cost the hundred and fifty million dollars? Is it just the stations and the vehicles? Because that doesn't make any sense to me, right? Uh at the end of the day, all of this is likely going to fall on A T L D O T, or that's how it seems with Summer Hill B R T. Uh they're just asking for a road restrip. They're not gonna do a different color on the route uh for the street, they're not going to have any physical dividers. How are the renderings any accurate representation of what they're going to deliver here if they're not even doing that for the folks downtown? Which is uh one of the projects that we would assume is one of the nicer ones, right? So, I I would really love to see whatever comes out of this investigation in terms of the financing for this entire project. And honestly, where is the city involved with this? What is the expectation of Marta? Is A P D going to do lane enforcement? That was the accepted thing whenever they were talking about Summer Hill B R T. That was their response to it, that's how we won't have another seventeenth street in the city. So I would really ask that you deeply look into where even the hundred and fifty million is supposed to be going, if at the end of the day, that's all we do. Uh and in my last fifteen seconds, I wanted to say, I'm Alan Babalinski, I'm Transportation Chair in N P U T, very glad to see all of the other representation from the N P U's. Um and yeah, uh you folks know me, we we've spoken, me and all of you, if you have any more questions regarding my weird questions, I'm happy to bring them up. Uh thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Fleming, I appreciate that. Always good to see Mayor Bill Campbell. Give him another round of applause. That's a mayor that always looked out for the people, really would have rolled up his sleeves to get involved. And he's here today, uh and I'm glad to see him. And uh again, uh you know, I spoke earlier, uh to set the record straight about, you know, how we got to this point. Um I did want to read some more of that or our ordinance that I put together uh years ago that passed in twenty sixteen, again, with foresight, that this moment may come. And once it was time to start moving the dirt and making the final selection, that we had to be wise enough to think this through. So I'm gonna read what 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 we put in um, you can write this down and look it up, it's our uh ordinance sixteen oh fourteen forty-two. All right, no, I'm sorry, sixteen R, I'm sorry, crash that, sixteen R forty-four-one, sixteen R forty-four-one. And so that means it's twenty sixteen. And I'll just read the now therefore be resolved clauses. Um someone asked about hiring folks to make sure they work on these projects when they live in this community. It says, "Be therefore resolved that the city's construction contracts for transportation projects are subject to the city's first source program, which requires that contractors use efforts to fill entry level positions from a register of eligible job seekers maintained by Atlanta Workforce Development Agency and the city reaffirms its commitment to this program for all T-Swabs transportation projects." That means that when this project comes out, gotta hire local folks from here. The next one is to be able to make sure that the city's construction contracts for transportation projects are subject to the city's disadvantaged business enterprise requirements, which are designed to promote meaningful opportunities for participation by historically disadvantaged minority and female owned businesses. And the city reaffirms its commitment to this program for all transportation projects. That all Marta tax projects will be subject to Marta's policies and programs regarding workforce development and contract and opportunities, which currently include a D V E program goal of thirty percent uh disadvantaged businesses in those guidelines. And that the city is committed to partner with Marta to coordinate Marta tax and T-Swabs transportation project list and plan so as to ensure a geographically equitable phase in and implementation of the transportation projects across the city. And that's what we wrote in twenty sixteen, to know that when this day came, when we start hiring contractors, when we start picking projects, when we start doing stuff, when we start adding contractors and 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 jobs, that this stuff was gonna be done equitably. And who co-signed this part, this policy with me is Quanza Hall. Quanza Hall is walking in, he was a council member at the time, if if uh Quanza Hall, Quanza Hall, Quanza Hall, yeah, and he and he was the second signer. It was he and I that created that policy, that said it had to be equitable. Um so I wanted to just share that because we're not gonna come out here and let them get, you know, anybody change what we already wrote. This policy's here, this is what we agreed to. That three hundred seventeen million is slated for this area. Now we have to decide if we're gonna do L R T or B R T, and I heard y'all, a lot of y'all said L R T. And so the deal is, the money's there. This is the money that we, you know, use as our sales tax and the the policy that I wrote along with Quanza signing off on and co-wrote with me is, that we're gonna have equity. And so that's what we standing on right now. We're standing on a policy that we created and we're gonna make sure we carry it all the way through. And somebody also asked about economic development and that 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 S and S cafeteria, that that Campbellton and Delo. You know how we say Campbellton looks about the same for the last twenty-five years, thirty years? Um and we talked about Tim Keen and 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 others came there, um Councilmember Overstreet. I I'm doing ride-alongs with the council members, as mayor, I'm putting them in the car and we going around. First stop, first stop that Councilmember Overstreet and I went to was we were talking about, we need good groceries on the south side. Good grocery store. We need to make sure we have good grocery stores, a pharmacy, and and this is a sign of a healthy community. A healthy community has good quality groceries, fresh vegetables, nourishment and financial uh support, like a like a good bank. What do I have any bank? Yeah, well, I mean, I'm talking about where you 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 actually need to be able to have these services available to you and you can actually get to it and that's what Rapid Transit would provide. And so I've already started working on a deal, the same people that did the Morris Mill Bowden Road project that I was a part of as an at-large council member, the same folks that we're about to take down here this week, uh upcoming, we're gonna be riding with them, talking to the to to that developer. I already got the number in mind, how much it costs to buy that out and to redevelop it so that we can have mixed use, meaning you would have a grocery store on the bottom of the shops and things, and then you also have housing at the top, mix and cut out. We starting on a plan, we're living on it. And we wanna push that through, and guess what? Rapid Transit helps be able to make a developer want to develop on that corridor. And so we gotta get it right, we gotta keep moving, and as we've assembled today, we gotta keep assembling for all of the projects that we want to see done. And that's just one of them. We're going up the Don, uh Don Lee Hollowell, that's a AKA Bankhead for those of us that's uh over uh fifteen years old. It's Bankhead Highway for me from Adamsville. Uh no bank exists on Bankhead, Bankhead Highway. No grocery store exists on Bankhead Highway. So I know we talking about Campbellton Road, I know where we at. Um but I'm talking about the whole south side uh elevation, a whole revolution of the south side where all the funds that we've been putting in, it's time to get it out. Uh and when we do it, this is me, I'm I'm even handed with mine. When we do it, when we say we want Red Lobster, well, Red Lobster goes away, when we don't go to this Red Lobster, but we like to go to Cobb Red Lobster because they water wetter or whatever magical formula that I said to myself. They they ice cubes are cold or something like that. Right? So if we bring something down here, we better shop down here and not take the Cobb. And let them get what they want in their tax, in their community. If we bring a new grocery store down here, we bring um some quality restaurants or some things like that, because those restaurant tours are gonna be taking a chance. They're gonna be investing in us. It's up to us to, after Sunday church, go eat at their restaurant. After our picnics and and I mean after our um, you know, our banquets for our kids and everything, go there. Use those things and stop going everywhere else and and forgetting now because that's when we start saying our service is a little less than that. Well, because they stressed out because, you know, there ain't enough customers to pay the tips to get them to stay here. It's an economic thing. This young young lady here has a store in Greenbrier. I'm proud of you for putting a store in Greenbrier twenty-six years old. I want you, and you don't even say the name on a mic real loud, you better, when I put this mic down, I know you went live, sir, but I want her to say the name of your business so that we can support you. That's important. And 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 that's how we do this uh ecosystem, and so we celebrate uh people who take these chances. And so when we start doing this, uh you know, bringing this uh rail down here, this, you know, when we do that, it's gonna attract businesses. I want us to go out here and support the people that do that or be the people that do that, somebody got great business ideas. It's about economic development. I've already put Invest Atlanta on notice. This part of town is where we gonna put some money. Grants, loans, investment, this is what equity is about. Hands down, and we're actually gonna have a um a a a a small office, uh you know, because Invest Atlanta is downtown. We we're coming out. I'm putting little little offices, campuses in the south side and one in the west side. So that you don't have to go downtown to be able to talk to somebody about loan potentials and down payment assistance and these kind of things. We are about to decentralize some of this. We are about to decentralize some of this stuff so you can have access to it. And that's important to have, um, there, here in this area. Um, last thing I'll say is, uh, Councilmember Overstreet, you know, you deserve a round of applause for it. Councilmember Lewis. And, yes, Councilmember Lewis. Yes, Councilmember Lewis. All of y'all, um, you know, Councilmember Waits. No, I'm getting all of them, hook for bull, well, that shit's back there. Yeah, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Waits, Councilmember Vaughn. And we, we did have Dozier, we did have Wes Boylan. And now, of course, we got Commissioners, uh, Bureman, and we got Commissioner Hall, and we had Rob Pitts. Uh, and then we also had Esha Collins from the school board. Never forget the importance of the Atlanta Public School System. As a Mays High Raider, I'm so in love with our school system. Never forget the importance of Martha for them, for our teachers that get to the school each day. So all of that to say, um, I stand with y'all. And we're gonna keep fighting a good fight to make sure we get everything that we need. Remember, when we put that belt line uh plan together, the first thing I did, along with, uh, Council, then Councilmember Bottom, she and I said, we gotta get them trained. Yeah, we, we gotta get this stuff down in southwest Atlanta too. And so we said, let's take it all the way down to Green Bra. And so you, young man, that's about to redevelop Green Bra. And Marcy, you should definitely tell everybody about the other four developments that are coming around. Um, if you live around here, make sure you, uh, stay in your house because, um, you know, they, they gonna start calling you, start buying your house soon. I want you to stay here and get these good groceries that's about to come this way. Stay here and get these good, good rapid transit that's coming this way. Stay here and get all these great economic activities. And then when you stay here, I want us to also shop here and uh take your kid to the At-Primer Center or to the Walter and Andrew Young YMCA for your upper school programs, because they are doing technology training. My tech bridge program is there right now, training kids how to code, how to fix iPhones, how to fly drones. We got it on the south side, now we gotta go support it, but let's do more and I'll see y'all soon.
One thing that we must not forget, man. No matter what you grant you, if you don't do something about the crime, everything coming is gonna die. So you gotta get this crime down. I don't care what you grant you. They're scared to go in this restaurant. So we got to make sure we focused, I hope you think about that. We don't really have to stop and let him go, uh, let him out, get out here and go to work and take care of business. Now, look, you can watch this the rest of the night, no matter who hacked it, the Zoom, whatever happened, that's another thing we need to watch. We prepared that this is live streaming, the information is up there over the praise room, which is on YouTube, at Facebook, Mount Carmel Baptist Church, and you can watch this entire meeting tonight. Back to you, Ms. Overstreet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another speaker and then we'll close it out. But, oh, right quick beforehand, uh, the, the thing that I asked you all to take pictures of to get to, um, send your messages to Martha, these are board members. Someone asked me who are they? These are the board members that, um, preside in the, the, um, the Atlanta delegation on the board. And they're the ones that will make these decisions in the board meetings. And that's, uh, Rob Mullis, Reggie Snyder, um, I mean Sender and Robbie Ash. And I put those email addresses here. And of course I added Colly Greenwood, who is the CEO. I put his, his email address there also, so that everyone will know who to contact about what you want to see in our investment on Campbellton Road, I promise.
And they need to come up here too. They need to come to Campbellton Road.
Was Martha invited to come here tonight?
Yes, we invited, uh, the board members and Rob Mullis did come, um, and
He's still here.
Yes, and, um, and the CEO. So, but this, so here's, here's the thing. So I didn't take role.
Okay, let me just say this, let me say this. It is the height of disrespect for this council member who represents this neighborhood to invite Martha and they ain't even brought a janitor. Rob Mullis is here. But, but the CEO should have been there.
But that's why.
You're being, you're being nicer to me. You're being nicer to me. You have been disrespected. Who pays Greenwood's salary? You do. All these folk, who pay Erica Pine's salary? Who's trying to push this through? You do. It is the height of disrespect. I'm sorry, I'm tired. I've been fighting for a long time, but I'm tired of these folk. And I've never seen Martha act like this. Martha usually laid back and cool, but I know why they're being so aggressive. I know who they fighting for, and I'm gonna tell y'all in due course.
Uh, good evening. My name is Edmund McGray and I came here. I've been here about forty years and no disrespect to anybody, but I don't have to be, I'm not a politician. I don't have to be polite. They're liars, straight up liars. And I wanna talk to, about the other people, the politicians. Like I said, they, I've been here forty years. So they've been going up there, every four years, every two years, there's an election. So they've been going along with it. They have been going along with it for, I don't, I, I don't know, I can't say it, but they've been going along with it. Those decisions couldn't have been made in that council without them going along with it. We paid, we didn't, we did more than earned this, we paid for this. And where I come from, I fight with mine and I go hand. And I'm telling you, those, some, somebody in that group are traitors. I'm gonna tell you straight up, they are traitors and they are lying. That's my problem. We need the rail, I, I live in the cap town. I've been hearing the same lie over there too, but I'm a resident of metro Atlanta. And we need rapid rail. You can't sit and talk about a golden bus or whatever, premium bus, and they gonna put a lane. Everybody feel the traffic bad in Atlanta. That bus gonna be riding that traffic all over again. This is lies and it's, that's it, that's lies.
Thank you so much. Here's our last speaker.
Come on, President, we got you after that, President.
All right, appreciate it.
Okay, two more and we'll close out.
Hi, I'm Brian and, uh, I'm, I'm from here, I'm an Atlanta native and I have an engineering degree in technology. And, um, I'm disappointed and I hope we fix this. You know, we paying taxes, taxes for this plan. And, you know, it was like a slap in the face when they did them two meetings and they was not in conduct and within standing. And, you know, the buses are insult. You know, we had a lot of bad experience with buses and we trying to get something right for southwest Atlanta. And we deserve, matter of fact, we're gonna get it. You know, we deserve nice things, you know? And I applaud city council, just like how we did the bus rapid transit trip. Do a light rail trip. Look at the, it's new technology out there and we can, it'd be less than with the three hundred and seventeen million dollars that we're talking about. So I applaud, just like how I've been doing my homework as a citizen, as a resident of this city all last week. I applaud everyone to do your homework and utilize our knowledge and do this right. Atlanta is a good city and it always has been. And we need to make sure we deliver, we're competitive. And most likely, if we get the World Cup, it's gonna be more to do. So I applaud the city council to do your homework and let's get this right. And let's do it right. And if I have to march myself on my days off to make sure that I get a train here to connect, then I will do it. So that's all I'm gonna say. Good night.
So this really is our last speaker, but last, best for last, President.
I like that one.
Real plan, council, thank y'all for putting this on tonight. I'm President Brett Dunlos. I represent ATU, which is the, uh, Macamated Transit Union. These are the modern workers, laborers in the house. So let me tell you first of all, this is about the community. We make sure you keep your eye on that dollar.
There you go.
Because I'm gonna tell you, Friday was Transit Equity Day along with Rosa Parks' birthday. It's a shame to see that three hundred million dollars is being taken away. If you look at it, we just did a study in the Public Transit Association. If you take one dollar, you get back five. So if you taking away three hundred million, that's one point five billion. This is where it's not gonna be back into our community. So remember, those three hundred needs to be here to get that one point five billion. So I will tell you, I drove eighty-three outside.
Come on, come on.
I drove them four to five thousand people each day. I understand what's going on in this community. We need to make sure the things that's going on, that LRT needs to be here. That LRT needs to be here. I can tell you with BRT, how many designated lanes are outside? How many express lanes are outside? If you wanted to work, you need those two out there. Right now, we can say they're not out there. So the LRT needs to be in place to make sure that this work. So I remember on eighty-three, large road, coming up to the low. I gotta stand. The union is here, labor is here, but again, I wanna make sure that y'all keep y'all eyes open. When we talking about LRT and BRT, right now, they telling you March first, they gonna have a reach program. What is it looking to? Because they trying to take away mobility. So mobility is gonna take away from what? The disability, the senior citizens. Make sure that it don't take it away as well in this community.
So even more than that, we need to research the reach department, the, the reach from Martha. In closing, everyone, and I didn't formally recognize Congressman Quanza Hall. Thank you so much for having me. I just wanna close with everyone truly understanding what this was about today. This is about Campbellton Road. When we, it's not about me, it's not about each one of us either. Because when we get Campbellton Road right, the whole Atlanta will reap the benefits. The whole Atlanta, north, south, east and west. Because we know where the gaps are and we knows where, know where the opportunities are. Campbellton is a huge gem. The opportunity is boundless if we get it right for not just wealth, the closing the wealth gap, but for transportation sake. The grid for the city of Atlanta, Martha's transportation grid is skeletal compared to other cities. It's skeletal. And our east-west connection is even more skeletal. We have work to do in the city and I really thought we were all on the same page. I thought we understood what it took, that that three hundred seventeen million dollars would balance our transportation grid and our wealth gap and it would alleviate so much more of the traffic because people that actually don't have to ride the bus would ride the train. And they would actually use Campbellton Road. Developers would flop to Campbellton Road. We would have a decent ice cream shop on Campbellton. We would have two grocery stores minimum. Who asks for a grocery store in a five mile span? Someone that's desperate. And who would dare agree to give that away? It doesn't even sound right to say that I was happy with a hundred and twenty million dollar investment of a three hundred seventeen million dollar promise. That's crazy. Do the math. Atlanta deserves three hundred seventeen million dollars on Campbellton Road. We're not tired, we're gonna keep on until that happens. Thank you all so very much for coming tonight in person, for staying around online, listening. I hear that I Zoom was hacked and didn't go over well, but you better believe this is all recorded. And I'm happy to share all of this with everyone as soon as possible. So again, thank you very much. And my office stands ready to help you.
Let us pray and we can go out with prayer. Um, if Paula Perry could be to show up here tonight, anybody from Paula Perry?
He's been.
Okay, I think we're coming tonight to show our support as well. TDJ, so I understand that the best amount of four hundred million dollars tying in with Paula Perry. We know that was somebody T-Base, that appears to love it. Coming in the neighborhood, teaming up with Paula Perry. We know how powerful that road be for Campbellton Road as well. Thank you so much. Now let us pray our way out. Father, we thank you for this night. We thank you for the crowd that responded to the call to show their support and that they care about the community, to expose what is wrong and to keep up what is right. I pray to God that you give us the strength to stand strong and never get tired, that we must fight for whatever we want. And we ask you to balance as we lead and not get divided and fight among each power where we stand together. Thank you for this unity tonight in Jesus' name, amen.
Please make sure to follow House of Ramirez, Mount Carmel Baptist Church, our Mayor of City of Atlanta, City of Atlanta Council Members, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Andrea Boone and Antonio Lewis. It is important that we support those that support us.